Members, any specials to my right? Mr. Price?
Mr. President, I have an abundance of caution. I'm accusing myself for items thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-four because my wife's employer has worked with applicants on these items.
All right, Councilmember.
Stuart Waldman, item sixty-six in general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item.
Thank you. Stuart Waldman, I am president of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. I want to thank some of the council members who were willing to meet with us to talk about this issue. Some of you would not, which is unfortunate, not showing leadership by doing that. You should be able to meet with people that you disagree with. And on this issue, we disagree. We think that this rapid increase will hurt the community. It will hurt people, and people will lose their jobs. We have tried to come up with a solution. We've tried to work with everyone. Unfortunately, it does not appear that people really want to work with us on this. And it's a shame because the fact is that at the end of the day, it's going to hurt the city, it's going to impact our ability to host large-scale events in the future, and it is going to end up costing people jobs. And that's not just
One minute.
That's not just speculation, that's reality. And it's unfortunate, it's happening today, it'll happen tomorrow, it'll happen next week, and it is very real. The consequences of this are real. The reality is, we do not need to rush this today. If the implementation is July, we can come back and all work together and come up with a solution that works for everyone. And the business community isn't saying, no, don't do it. We're saying, work with us. We have real solutions for the problems that have been identified, the problems that our council members have identified. There were nine amendments that were introduced previously, and they haven't been discussed, they haven't had a hearing, they haven't had an economic development report. We're just asking for some time to work together because this does not need to be rushed for the betterment of the city. So, thank you.
Yes. Good morning, council president and members of the city council. My name is Yvonne Wheeler, and I'm the president of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor. And I would like to speak on item sixty-six and general public comment.
You'll have one minute for each.
Thank you. Today, we gather to advocate for something fundamental: dignity, justice, and fairness for the hard-working women and men who are the lifeblood of Los Angeles tourism industry, the workers at LAX represented by SEIU USWW and HERE Local 11. These individuals are not just employees, they are the backbone of the city's ability to welcome millions of visitors each year. The LAX living wage ordinance is not merely a policy. It is a lifeline for those who give their all yet face insurmountable time challenges in meeting their basic needs. These workers ensure our airport runs efficiently, terminals are clean, passengers are cared for, and safety is maintained. Despite their essential contributions, many earn wages that forces impossible choices between paying their rent or putting food on their tables. USWW member Laura Escivell, a mother of four, works demanding night shifts at the airport, yet her wages barely cover her family's necessities. Her story is not unique. It reflects the daily struggles of countless workers. This ordinance about survival ensures that workers like Laura can live with dignity and avoid homelessness. Raising wages also fosters community stability. Workers like HERE Local 11 member Lorena Mendez often face grueling commute from distant neighborhoods or live in unstable conditions because they cannot afford to work where they live. Finally, this is a moral responsibility. Our city cannot tackle, claim to tackle homelessness and poverty without addressing the root causes. When full-time workers are at risk of eviction or homelessness, something must change. Ensuring a livable wage is tangible, a meaningful way to uphold our commitment to equity and justice. This ordinance is a reflection of our values. The city truly cares for their people and their labor. Two of them workers deserve more than our gratitude. They deserve action. Let's ensure they receive a living wage, not just as a gift, but as a right. Thank you.
Maria Salinas, president and CEO of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, public comment in item sixty-six.
You'll have one minute for each.
Great. Thank you very much for having me here this morning, allowing me to say a few words. Fifty-five percent. This living wage ordinance is a fifty-five percent increase over three years, not including the additional healthcare costs that is being proposed. Fifty-five percent, if you think of your own individual offices, is that sustainable? I tell you that it is not, that we have spoken with countless small businesses, concessionaires, restaurants, flower shops, hotels, small and large, that understand the true economics of what this proposal that is before you. We have major concerns, and we have worked with many of you well over a year to come to the table and to ask for the opportunity to work together and come up with a solution that works. We're not saying no to a living wage ordinance. We're not saying no to thirty dollars. But you need to be able to have a sustainable business, a sustainable jobs, so that those jobs are there and that they don't get taken away. This is a real threat to our economy, a real threat to our small businesses, a real threat to the city that should be in a position of investing, investing in this economy, in businesses that can create jobs, jobs that are good-paying jobs. So, I ask you to hold off on passing this proposal today, to hold off on going into this abyss with this incredible amount of increase. Fifty-five percent over three years. That is not sustainable to anyone, and that is something you should all consider as you evaluate this proposal before you. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jovan. I'm an airport worker at LAX. I've been fasting for three days for this living wage ordinance. I'm tired, I'm weak, I'm cold, I'm hungry, and I just want to let you guys know how serious this is to me. Healthcare is very important to me. It needed to survive. So when I say I need this, I need this. We can't go backwards on healthcare, we can't go backwards on our wages. We need this as City of Los Angeles workers. And when I say this, I say directly to this section right here. Please have kindness in your heart to hear us out. We are the workers in your city.
General Public Comment.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Laura Escivell y trabajo en el aeropuerto por veintidós años.
Hi, my name is Laura Escivell, and I've worked at the airport for twenty-two years.
Yo soy una de las personas que también está en huelga de hambre estos tres días.
I am one of the people on a hunger strike during these twelve days.
Y sí, me siento débil.
And yes, I feel weak.
Pero estoy fuerte de fe, espíritu y convicción.
But I am strong of conviction and of spirit.
Y ahora yo les digo a ellos que se jejan de treinta dólares. ¿Quién trabaja?
And I'm telling the, and I'm saying to the people who are complaining about these thirty dollars, who are the people who are working?
Tenemos un aeropuerto que es el más importante del mundo.
We have the most important airport in the world.
¿Quién da la cara?
And who's showing their face?
Nosotros los trabajadores estamos día a día luchando.
We, the workers, are fighting day after day.
Para que las grandes corporaciones se embolsen el dinero.
So that these giant corporations can fill their pockets.
Porque ellos no nos pueden dar algo a nosotros que no merecemos.
Why can't they give us something that we deserve?
Es un derecho.
It's a right.
La vivienda.
Living.
La comida.
Food.
La renta.
Rent.
Seguro médico.
Health insurance.
Nosotros no estamos pidiendo aquí limosna de nadie.
Here, we are not coming here to beg.
Nosotros somos la clase trabajadora.
We are the working class.
Nosotros no lo merecemos.
We deserve it.
Y ahora ustedes les digo
General Public Comment.
Que pongan su mano en su corazón y nos apoyen.
And now I'm saying, put your heart on your hand, your hand on your heart and support us.
Hagan lo correcto.
Do the right thing.
Gracias.
Thank you.
The past Thanksgiving travel has broken records with over two-point-two million passengers going through LAX. This surpasses the pre-pandemic levels. They did so because of workers like me and my coworkers. The independent CLA report confirmed what we've been saying for the last six-hundred-and-nine days. When workers are paid a true living wage and receive quality healthcare, we do better and LA's economy does better too. Thirty dollars an hour would help me and my family feel less stressed when we have to pay rent, bills, groceries, try to have an emergency fund, save for the future. Right now, you all are investing billions of dollars into LAX, making it nice, making it modern. But where is the investment of the people, the workers that make it happen? What are you going to do for us? So, we're asking today for you all to stand with the workers, stand with LA, Los Angeles' working families, and do the right thing and pass this legislation today. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Alejandra Váez. I am secretary treasurer of SEIU USWW, and I'm here speaking on item sixty-six and public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
Council members, I am here with Stoke Ashley, who works at the airport as a custom porter, who is home insecure. I am here with Laura Escivell, who has been working for the airports for twenty-two years, scrubbing the toilets of the airplanes, a cabin cleaner, humbly. I am here with Jovan Houston, who is an emergency response alarm operator at LAX, who has COPD, and whose son plays football and also has asthma, and they happen to live on the border of Inglewood. We have come to you time after time, and it's shameful. You have said you needed a study. You have said you needed an economist. You said you need the economist in person. You have said we need a new committee. You have said to the opposition, who by the way stood in line after sixteen fasters, have not eaten for three days with their carne asada and their coffee and their bread this morning. That is an example of what they do to these workers every day, and these workers are barely making it. They're struggling to get by. So today, we know you have the power of your vote to vote yes, but don't hide behind the over-academic, articulate hiding blocks. Just say, if you're going to vote no, have the courage to vote no to our members' faces. This is a Goliath, a David versus Goliath story, and we need to know where you're at. And what we know is that we have red and purple together, and we know what that means.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker? So, Speaker
Thank you, that's your time. We got to go to the next speaker.
Speaker, you're now delaying our public comment. We have to move on to the next speaker. So, this is your first and only formal warning. Please vacate the podium so we can continue with public comment. For everyone here, you can notice, we have a lot of people who are here to speak on this item. So, these types of delays take away from the time that would be given to the people who are here. So, the sooner we can continue with public comment, the more people we can hear from. I'm sorry, Speaker, we can't continue.
Okay, take your time, I like this song. Economic inequality is our existential crisis. The CEOs of Hilton, Hyatt, and Marriott all made more than fifty million dollars last year. Yet, these workers who have struck, marched, and now fasted, whose body and talent fuel this thriving sector, cannot afford to live in Los Angeles. They live in the just hope economy, where they must literally hope and pray that they will avoid a car breakdown, an illness, a missed paycheck that will land them on the street. And just so we're clear, thirty dollars is sixty thousand dollars a year. CEOs, the ones I just mentioned and many others, will still earn one thousand times more than these workers, a thousand times. It's time to decide which side you're on. This has taken far too long. It is time today to pass this Olympic and Paralympic wage. Thank you.
Cara Bartel, sixty-six in general. My name is Cara Bartel, and I'm the general manager of the Hoxton Hotel in downtown Los Angeles. And I am extremely concerned that the current council recommendations are going to jeopardize jobs. I can tell you that, I know it. We are currently waiting to hear in wrapped arms about what has happened. We will be forced to close services, and we will be costing Los Angelinos their jobs. There will be grave consequences that these high prices that visitors to our city cannot afford. Los Angelinos will not be able to afford a staycation in downtown, they won't be able to afford ninety-dollar parking, a cup of coffee in our hotels. The hotels are here to support the Olympics, but I tell you, I hope we make it to the Olympics. That's the important thing. We have proposed reasonable changes to help the city meet your goals, and while keeping hotels and our businesses in them open. We believe in fair wages, but we also believe it's important to ensure that our hotels don't lose their jobs. Please listen to our recommendations. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Nick Stewart-Block. I'm speaking on item sixty-six and general public comment. I'm a research and policy analyst with Lane. We're hearing that the industry is in crisis, but data from city and industry sources paints an entirely different picture. Since 2023, in hotels citywide, RevPAR, average daily rates, and revenue have risen to record levels in hotels, as has transient occupancy taxes collected from hotels and overall visitor spending. On every performance metrics, larger hotels covered by this policy outperform hotels citywide. Overall, LA's Tourism and Convention Board writes that we are seeing, quote, "consistent demand and strong occupancy rates in 2024 in the LA area so far." This can hardly be considered a crisis. What we do know from data and what workers have been saying all along is that there is a crisis right now, one that will worsen with inaction. Simply put, wages have not kept up with health costs or rent, and Angelinos are struggling as a consequence. But LA City Council is an opportunity to change this and has taken bold action before in 1997, in 2007, in 2009, and most recently in 2014. In each instance, the industry cried catastrophe and yet continued to break records in visitors, performance metrics, and revenue. We know they will do so again, and we urge that you ensure that tourism workers can thrive too. Thank you.
Item sixty-six and not a comment. My name is Laura Banuet, and I am here fasting for the third day because I was here actually when my union, reunion came up, their proposal to the city to raise the living wage in April of twenty-three. And it has been nothing but obstructions and postponements and situations that don't have anything to do with what we're asking for, which is that you, our officials, listen to us. We are, most of us are your constituents. Most of us are here because we're working at this job, we're doing it for the city, for our families. I'm a single mother, I work at LAX, and I was, I used to live like in the West Side. I had to move out of the West Side because the rents were uncontrollable, so then I found a converted garage with a bathroom but no access to a kitchen. And I've been living there with my daughter for about eight years, and this has to change. This has to improve because you guys are in the sitting chair right now to make the vote, and I'm asking you to vote yes in raising the Olympic wage. I'm here because I'm part of the union and I'm ready to continue this fight, but this has been gone long enough. It's been a year and three quarters, and for heaven's sakes, I mean, we're here and we're going to continue to be here to fight. Thank you.
Sure. So, I am one of the fasters. I've been fasting for three days with my union, SEIU Local USWW, and my brothers and sisters from Unite Here Local 11. The reason why we're fasting is because we're representing thousands of people that live in Los Angeles that cannot afford groceries. We also haven't been in our homes for the past three days, and that represents all the people that have been living in the cars and cannot afford rent. So, what we're asking from you today, City Council, is, and I'm pretty sure I've spoken to some of you in front, are you with us or not? At least have the dignity to say us no or yes. We've earned that from you. Also, ladies and gentlemen, let's make an example of Los Angeles. Let's pass this living wage. Let's be the example for the rest of this country that corporations and the working class could thrive. The Olympics are coming. Four years ago, we were considered essential. Now, we're just, what? We're not considered essential anymore. We're just considered trying to basically take them out of your pockets. And it's crazy how these multi-billionaire people are here and they're flossing their watches, and we have the opposition drinking coffee while we're fasting. So I tell you this, lead boldly, show the example, so we could show how this country's supposed to be run by the working class. Thank you. I got thirty seconds left. I just want to say David Huertas is on the phone, and he will like TikTok.
My name is Douglas Marmol. I worked at LAX for thirty years, and I participated in the first living wage ordinance. And right now, I'm doing it because of other, my company, Areas USA, had some news and holes already gave us our contracts, so we're making living wage, we're having the healthcare that we need, but I'm doing it the fastest for the other companies that they're not paying yet those, those wages and those benefits. Thank you.
Mi nombre es Anna y pertenezco a la industria hotelera, soy recamarrera.
Hi, my name's Anna, and I work in the hotel industry. I am, perdón señora, usted es recamarrera en tones y cuartos, waitress or housekeeping?
Soy housekeeping, recamarrera.
And I'm a housekeeper.
Estoy aquí para decirles que un grupo de compañeros hemos estado haciendo huelga de, fasting, y, perdón.
I'm here to say that me and my, me and the people with me, we have been fasting.
Soy una de las trabajadoras que viven en el área del downtown.
I'm one of the workers who lives in downtown.
Pero esto me cuesta mucho por el incremento de sueldos en las rentas.
But it's costing me a lot due to the increase in rent.
Pero tengo que estar cerca a mis niños porque estudian aquí. Mi trabajo pertenece aquí, entonces tengo que trabajar cerca.
But I have to be here because I need to be close to my children. They go to school here, I work here, so I need to be here.
Las rentas están muy altas, pero aún así tengo que hacerlo.
The rent is too high, but either way, I need to do it.
Diferencia de mis otros compañeros también que se le dificulta llegar aquí, son dos horas de camino para llegar a su trabajo.
My other comrades, they would like to be here, but they can't. It takes like two hours to get to work.
Estoy aquí viéndoles las caras a ustedes, a los que tienen el poder de decidir.
I am here looking at your faces, you, those who have the power to decide.
Que la clase trabajadora, por quien votó por ustedes.
For the working class that gives you their votes.
Está aquí pidiendo, exigiendo algo justo.
Is here asking, is here demanding fair wages.
Espero que ustedes puedan reconocer a nosotros, a todos los miles de trabajadores de la industria que necesitan el dinero para poder subsistir.
I hope you can recognize us, you can recognize the millions of workers in this industry that need the money to be able to get by.
He escuchado aquí presente a una de las participantes de la industria hotelera decir que a los que vienen, los turistas que vienen, le va a costar mucho dinero el hospedarse en sus hoteles o el estar aquí por las Olimpiadas.
I've heard someone representing the hotel industry come here and say that it's going to cost the tourists too much money to come here, to stay at the hotels, to go to the Olympics.
Quiero decirles que esto es totalmente falso. La industria hotelera, los dueños de los grandes hoteles, porque están viniendo aquí a decir como nosotros que necesitan, que digan, que voten que no, nosotros estamos diciendo lo que eso es falso. Eso es falso porque ellos tienen el dinero, el dinero en sus bolsillos que no quieren soltar para los trabajadores. Nosotros estamos pidiendo que hoy ustedes tienen la decisión de votar yes, que sí.
We're here to say that that's a lie. They have come all the way over here with that, with all the money in their pockets. We're asking you for the workers to vote yes.
My name is Reverend Matthew Waite. I live and serve in Los Angeles City Council District Five. I'm a pastor at First Lutheran in Palms and part of clergy and laity United for Economic Justice. Christ called His disciples to care for the marginalized and the oppressed, and so I stand in solidarity with tourism workers as they seek fair wages and access to healthcare. That's why I'm here to urge you to vote yes with no amendments or exclusions that negatively impact these workers. These workers have been waiting too long for this law, and it's placing people in impossible situations as they struggle to afford basic necessities like housing or medical care. And so it is time that this group of workers who are essential to the economy of LA be treated with dignity rather than being treated as expendable cogs and a machine. Let's get this to the city attorney and raise the wage now, or in the words of Isaiah, cease to do evil, learn to do good, seek justice, correct oppression. You have that power. Thank you.
Adelante.
Mi nombre es Lorena Mendez.
My name is Lorena Mendez.
Ocho años trabajando para Skyship en el aeropuerto.
I've been working for Skyship in the airport.
Mi situación es muy difícil porque debido a las rentas que están muy altas, no hay control de rentas, ya no pude más sostener mi vivienda acá.
It's been very difficult because due to the rent going so high and without rent control, I wasn't able to maintain my rent here.
Soy madre soltera con tres hijas y tuve que moverme a Bakersfield porque son un poco más baratas las casas.
I am a single mother and I had to, perdón señora, se puede repetir? No, no alcancé a escucharla.
Sí, soy madre soltera de tres hijas y tuve que moverme a Bakersfield para poder rentar una casa grande para mis hijas y para mí.
Burbank señora, para aclarar.
Bakersfield, la ciudad de Bakersfield.
Gracias. And I am a single mother of three daughters, and I had to end up moving to Bakersfield so that I could rent a house for me and my three daughters.
So ahora tengo mi trabajo a dos horas de lejos, lo cual me está costando mucho llegar a mi trabajo.
So now I have to commute two hours to work, and that's costing me a lot of money just to get to work.
Así como yo, habemos muchos compañeros.
And just like me, there's a lot of coworkers that are dealing with this.
Y creo que es justo, creo que lo merecemos, tener una vida digna, un salario digno que nos permita por lo menos vivir tranquila cerca de nuestro trabajo con nuestras familias.
And I think it's just, I think we deserve a just wage. And I think it's just, I think we deserve a just wage so that we can support our families.
Ya que nosotros somos los que hacemos el trabajo más duro, preparando los vuelos, preparando comidas, todo lo que se necesite para que el aeropuerto funcione al cien.
Because we're doing the hardest work repairing the planes, preparing the food, the things that we need so that the airport can work a hundred percent.
Me gusta mucho mi trabajo y estoy feliz de servir, de dar ese servicio. Pero me siento muy triste cuando veo que no hay un respaldo para nosotros, los trabajadores.
I really love my job, but I find it very saddening that there isn't anything for us workers to fall back on. There is no support.
Ojalá este día puedan ustedes darnos ese sí que tanto necesitamos. Y no, no estamos viviendo, estamos sobreviviendo y creo que no es justo.
I hope today you can give us the support we need because we're not thriving, we're not living, we're surviving. And that's not fair.
Muchas gracias por estar acá, por poner esa atención a nosotros. Te necesitamos ser escuchados.
Thank you for being here and for giving us your attention to those of us, us who need to be listened to.
Que Dios les bendiga a todos y así como nosotros un día ponemos el apoyo. Yo soy una ciudadana de Estados Unidos y pongo mi voto para ustedes cuando ustedes lo piden. Espero que esta vez puedan poner ese voto para nosotros, la clase trabajadora, que también merecemos estar comiendo saludable bien. Ahora tengo tres días sin comer, me siento débil, pero tengo fe que van a pensar un poquito más de nosotros.
And I hope today you can support us. I am a citizen of the United States. I put forth my vote for you. So I hope that you can put forth your vote for us.
Muchas gracias y que Dios les bendiga en esta tarde.
Thank you so much and may God bless you.
I'm Sister Diane Smith. I'm here in solidarity for the workers. I speak for item 66. The social teachings of my church, the Catholic Church, on the dignity and rights of workers affirm and state, the economy must serve the people, not the other way around. Work is more than a way of living. It's a form of continuing participation in God's creation. If the dignity of work is to be protected, then the basic rights of workers must be respected, including decent and fair wages and healthcare benefits. And I might add, I am proud that my own religious community, the Sisters of St. Joseph of Crandellat, made a commitment many years ago to pay a livable wage for their employees with health benefits, care, and other benefits included. And I'd also to quote scripture. In Matthew 20, Matthew 7, Jesus says, "In everything you do for others, what you would have them do to you." In Judaism, "Think about your actions and make sure you do not do to others that you would cause you suffering." Hinduism, "Do not do to others that which would cause you pain if done to you." Islam, "None of you will believe until you have loved for your brother what you love for yourself." And what this scriptures are telling us, that as you, council, receive a just and livable wage for the work you do, you are recalled to do the same for those workers who are the backgrounds of LA's tourism industry. The moral authority of our faith traditions demands just wages, dignified healthcare for workers. We need LA to be the city of working families, families that can afford to live here.
My name is Maria Romero, an employee of LAX at Terminal 1. I work at Southwest. Last week in December 4, we had a total of 700 passengers on wheelchairs. From the eight hours that I worked, I assisted 300 passengers. I went upstairs with 15 pages of passengers that I logged in. That I, I took them to check in their bags and sit them on the wheelchair and bring them back into the building and wait for their assistants to come. These passengers come with, with, how can I say? They're come late, they come an hour to their flight. There's other passengers that are offloading, are coming to LA. So they're come paranoid, scared, nervous. You know, they're coming from the hospital, they're coming, you know, sick. So I have to be the one to cheer them up, to tell them that there's a, there's a bright, there's a new day coming here. We're, you know, just giving their hopes up, right? So I'm here to ask you, please, don't take my work for granted, right? I worked so hard for 18 years at the airport. You know, I go with pride, I go with love, you know, I do it for my coworkers. I'm fasting, I'm part of the group, did it for three days. I've been up here many times. I said, let me do an action that's more tougher and what it is, is fasting. You know, let me show them how serious I am. This is, there's, there's traveling, there's movement going on, you know, there's work, there's going, there's, I'm not sure what they're saying, that there's no, that there's no jobs or something's going to happen? No, it's all a lie. So thank you, I thank everybody. Please vote yes.
Hi, good morning, item 66, public comment. My name is Eddie Diaz. I'm a tourism worker at the W Hollywood. And I'm here to support my brothers and sisters from USWW at the airport to get their wage increase because it is necessary for us to have a life in the city. It's very expensive to live here. And from personal experience, I've gone through it on my strikes and stuff, my fight for my contract at my hotel. We won, but it was a long fight. It took us a year to win. But during that period of time, I was unemployed. I went through one of my darkest periods. And during that time, the people that was there supporting me was my brothers and sisters from the airport and Unite Here Local 11. Those CEOs and rich people that came here to support the airport, hotels, they weren't there to help me. Instead, they were laughing at me, throwing shade at me for being in my strikes, for supporting my brothers and sisters. Earlier in the morning, when we got here, they were eating in front of us, drinking coffee in front of us. That shows you the kind of people that they are. They don't care about us. They don't care about you guys. They only care about the money you guys can bring them and to fill up their pockets. Here today, I want you guys to see who you guys are supporting. A group, a group of employees that are here for each other, like my brothers and sisters have done for me. Or a bunch of greedy people that are here just to make more money and don't give a shit about anybody. Thank you.
Good, which items would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak to all of them, please, and public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items, go ahead.
Okay, for the first item is the one for the Church of Scientology, the Cult of Scientology, to get its ITT renewal. I'm going to say no because you know what? They have massive, massive, massive amounts of surveillance of people. They have licensed readers. They have even their own Scientology officer, you know, friendly officers like Senior Lead Officer White. No offense, you know, but I'm just going to say it. Has even admitted that they have an exorbitant amount of cameras and surveillance. And it makes me, it's a concern to the community because you, you know, you all made a rule now where LAPD can just hook into their stuff. Why does a church, an alleged church, need so much surveillance? Like what's going on in there? What are they hiding? What are they protecting that they need massive, massive amounts of surveillance? So I'm going to say no, unless you go in and really investigate what's going on. But you guys, I can't even get you guys to do, you know, Mr. Hugo, to do anything about the, you know, the non-ADA compliant, you know, everything on your easement. So you're not going to do anything about this massive amounts of security.
Speaker, move on to your next item.
Sure. And when it comes to all the ones, like all the items where you're doing a nuisance, then I'm going to say no until you guys realize that there's a lot of people in the community that are finding everything that's going on around L. Ron Hubbard Way with all the planters, with all the street closers, with everything going on there and the harassment, that until you deal with that nuisance, why are you going after all these other people? And, you know, that's really what I want to talk about. And when it comes to hiring and all these things, I'm just asking that you, you know, why are they taking it away from the civil service? You know, there's a lot of people wanting jobs, but by taking it away from civil service, you're taking away a lot of the screening, a lot of the, everything that needs to protect us to make sure we get the right people hired. It's to protect the city from nepotism, okay? And so the fact that, you know, so the fact that you're taking that away is ridiculous. I'm saying no, and I hope you all say no. We don't need more nepotism. We don't need everyone, you know, bringing in their friends, you know, and all that. And as far as the one on 33 with the housing, the homeless, I do agree with, you know, that we have to help the homeless shelters get their right permits and everything that they need to be able to do what they need to do. But that's Ms. Rahm's, you know, thing, and she still owes me an apology. So that's just a reminder, Ms. Rahm, remember how you interrupted me before I spoke? And I didn't appreciate it, so you owe me an apology. Okay, so now for, am I on my?
General Public Comment.
Public Comment. First of all, I would like to say that Janet Whelan, the Cult of Scientology is, she is a handler for somebody who I will not mention their name because they do not deserve to have their name mentioned. And they are on my chat right now trying to harass me and intimidate me from talking right now. It's not him, it's them. It's the Church of Scientology in OSA trying right now. They have had this person try to instigate violence against me. And now they are having him, you know, try to instigate coercion and intimidation for me. But it is Janet Whelan, I will stand on that. And when it comes also, I want to say yesterday that people were taking pictures from that side going here. That can be seen as intimidation, that should not be done, even though you do have a right to do it. I thank Mr. McCosker for listening, but there's so many people that do not listen when people are talking and that's right now. And I'm disappointed in.
Good morning. My name is.
Before you begin, I'm sorry. The gentleman in the back, I believe he's in a gray hoodie with the camera. He's like right in front of the blackboard. This is your first and only warning. Please do not disrupt this meeting. Again, there are a lot of people who speak. So the more disruptions we have, it actually takes away from the time for people to give public comment. I'm sorry, speaker. Go ahead.
Good morning, Reverend Eddie Anderson, speaking on item 66 in general public comment. Good morning, honorable members of council, sisters and brothers. I stand here to remind you that scripture declares that, "It has not yet appeared what we shall be." Which means we can lean into our moral imagination and imagine in Los Angeles where the ambassadors, not just workers, but there are the ambassadors for Los Angeles who work at LAX, make $30 an hour. We can lean into a Los Angeles where people don't have to make a decision between whether I'm going to pay for the childcare that is rising in Los Angeles or the rent. We can live in Los Angeles where people can make sure they can provide food on their tables and still work one job, not two, not three, and have dignity. For they are our ambassadors, they are the ones who represent us on the streets. So I implore you to pass this legislation, to pass $30 an hour, to create a place where everyone in Los Angeles can live and not have to be hungry.
General. All right.
Oh, general public comment?
You don't have to.
I don't have to, but I will say this is a general public comment, that when you think about this, I was talking to a small business owner and they were talking about, they don't know, they are not against the $30 for their workers. And I thought, the work belongs to you all. This is the work. How can we create a Los Angeles where all of us can exist? Where the workers who are fasting, who are giving away their food so that they can dig spiritually and bind themselves together to have their existence? This is not a binary decision. This is a decision of bold choice and of courage to make sure that everyone has what they need. It's Advent, it's Christmas. I remind you, there is no one for Jesus in the end. But there was one person who was bold enough to say, there's a place for you in this city as well. Let's make, let's make our city that city where all angels can fly.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Good morning, my name is Jessica Durham with LANE. I'm director of our Tourism Workers Rights and Campaign. Our coalition consists of over 150 organizations and 360 small businesses across every single council district. This broad coalition, many of whom are with us today, has been joining workers here at City Hall for almost two years now. And LANE weaved together with workers in every fight to raise the wage over the past three decades. From the landmark 1997 Living Wage Ordinance to 2009, when LAX workers fought for and won access to healthcare for their families, and 2014's historic citywide hotel worker minimum wage. Today's vote is continuing that noble legacy. Every time, it's been a fight. Every time, the industry has echoed the same hollow proclamations of doom, which I'm sure you're about to hear more of. And every single time, the tourism industry has only continued to grow and to thrive. The sky has never fallen. This ordinance is really just a straightforward fix to catch up with the current economics. You just heard why this is so urgent directly from workers, in their own words, workers who've been fasting for three days to shed light on this crisis. We know this will transform lives. We know the industry can afford it. We appreciate the leadership council has shown in moving this forward at long last. This will be a great day for workers. This will be a great day for Los Angeles. So again, we encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Robbie Nasser, general manager of a 450 rooms hotel in downtown Los Angeles. Today I stand before you to express our concerns regarding the proposed living wage ordinance. While I fully support reasonable wage increases, the aggressive wage levels being proposed are simply unmanageable for our industry, particularly in light of the drastic decline in hotel profitability over the past few years, especially following the COVID-19 pandemic. Our local market has yet to fully recover. And imposing such significant wage hikes, coupled with the exorbitant healthcare subsidies being suggested, could lead to an estimated increase of $2 million in benefit payment for our hotel alone. This is unattainable. If this ordinance passes as proposed, we fear it will force many hotels, including ours, to make painful decisions, potentially closing outlets and laying off valuable staff. I have spoken with many colleagues in our industry and we all share the same concerns. So please work with us to find a more balanced solution that supports both our employees and the future of our businesses. We're not saying no, don't do it. We're saying let's do it in a way where we can work together and do not end up hurting the same people we're trying to assist. Thank you.
Mi nombre es Diana De La Torre, represento al Hotel Mama Shelter.
My name is Diana De La Torre and I represent the Hotel Mama Shelter.
Un hotel pequeño de tan solo 70 cuartos en Hollywood.
It's a small hotel in Hollywood of only 60 rooms.
Okay. Estoy aquí para comentarles la situación de nuestro hotel en los últimos meses.
I'm here to tell you about the situation in our hotel that we've been experiencing for the last couple of months.
Nuestro hotel no ha tenido los niveles de ocupancia en los últimos meses o años comparado a años anteriores.
Our hotel hasn't had the same level of occupancy in comparison to prior months or years.
Debido a esto, hemos sufrido tener que reducir el horario de nuestro personal, cortando drásticamente horas de labor.
Due to this, we've had to drastically cut the hours of our labor force and drastically cut our labor force.
Desafortunadamente, yo recibo personas en mi oficina casi diariamente pidiéndome que le regresemos sus horas de trabajo.
Sadly, every day I get people coming into my office asking us to please give them back their work hours.
Desafortunadamente, si esta propuesta va en efecto.
And unfortunately, if this proposal goes through.
Nos veremos forzados a no solo eliminar horas de trabajo, pero desafortunadamente eliminar por completo ciertos servicios y trabajos en nuestro hotel.
Unfortunately, if this goes through, we're not only going to have to cut more work hours, but cut out complete services and jobs.
Les pedimos que juntos solucionamos lo que está en debate. Les pedimos que juntos solucionamos lo que está en debate y les agradecemos. Queremos seguir que nuestros empleados tengan su trabajo y que tengan un trabajo estable.
We're asking you, we're asking all of us to please find a solution together so that our employees have a stable line of work.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, good morning. My name is Nick Cruz. I'm here just really seeking for a living wage with a reasonable and sustainable increase that can retain jobs and our businesses viability. I definitely appreciate certain council members' willingness to talk with us and the business community. I'm very disappointed in some other council members and their lack of engagement in the details and what the adverse impact could be from this living wage. Traffic is down 13% at LAX from 2019. Sales are lagging 21% from 2019. And you're seeking a 30% increase in just one year and 50% over four years? Look, I'm a second-generation minority-owned business owner, and majority of my employees are minorities as well. And we're just all trying to improve their lives. But what you guys are going to do today, potentially in passing this, will have an adverse effect and negative impact because there will be net job loss. Look at the FAST Act. It just came out, the report. There is a net job loss from the FAST Act wage increase. And this wage increase is not as sufficient-- or is even more sufficient. Currently at LAX today, people are laying people off in concessions because traffic is down and the businesses have not recovered. Sales does not mean profitability. Businesses are not profitable right now. Unfortunately, the terminals amen are also down from last year. So we had to rebid our schedules and lay off 30 people just the other day. And that's not to be punitive. That is just so we can sustain our businesses. So I implore you to take more time, understand what the impact of this will be. This is not going to go into effect until July next year. We have time to meet on this in January and pass something that is sustainable for the businesses and doesn't have the negative impact of job loss to the people that we're trying to help the most. Thank you so much.
Item number 66 in general public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, Council President and distinguished council members. Unlike the multi-billion-dollar companies referenced, we are a disadvantaged business owner local to Los Angeles. We've worked tirelessly for 20 years to build our business and be in a position to be here today and to be a fabric of LAX. We are a byproduct, a direct byproduct of the robust inclusion and diversity, inclusiveness efforts the City of Los Angeles have put forth. Our track record more than demonstrates that we care greatly for our 300-plus team members. Unfortunately, as we've communicated previously, the reality is that many people lose their jobs as a result of this very steep and immediate urgent wage increase. It is a fact that today, many people at LAX are already starting to receive warrant notices. Warrant notices are a requirement as a result of massive layoffs. That is a fact. I dare somebody to dispute me. For the record, we are not here to say we do not appreciate or do not support a living wage. Today, we pay above living wage for many of our team members, every team member, actually. But what I'm saying is take a more calculated, measured approach to make sure that this is sustainable and allows our business to remain viable. This next portion of the message is to my team members. I want to go on record and say, for those of you who will be laid off in the future, I am deeply sorry I failed you. We have worked very hard the last year to educate, inform, and advocate for a more calculated, thoughtful approach to this measure. But the reality is, we will not be able to retain all of our team members, unfortunately. For the people that will remain, I'm more so ever committed to providing a more thriving and equitable outcome for all of us. And so I would like to end on saying thank you to the council members who've really taken the time to learn, understand our business, and really appreciate the thoughtful consideration. Thank you. God bless.
My name is Mark Davis. I'm the President and CEO of the Hilton Universal, a very busy hotel at a destination location. Very concerned about the ordinance going forward in its current form. It will cost jobs. It likely is to kill the project that we have planned to build 400 more rooms needed in that area for the activities that happen at Universal City. Very proud to be in Council District Four and want to make this project work for our Councilwoman Rahm. I know she supports that. We appreciate, and I want to send my gratitude to those who have sat down and been willing to listen to us, to make sense of what is about to happen. If you go forward with this without pause, we really urge you to continue to think about this. Things, smart decisions are made by listening, and that's what you're doing today, and we appreciate your time. We do the same thing with our team members. Our team members, we listen to them. Our team members are happy. They feel like they're getting fair wages. We always listen to them. Our housekeepers, as soon as they touch the ninth room, they get $40 an hour. That happens in a busy hotel. So, you know, we do listen. We do the right thing. And we want to go forward with this project that is about to kill 1,000 construction jobs, if it's killed, and 200 permanent good-paying jobs. So I urge the council to continue to pause, to listen, to think about this and the impact that it will make and the jobs that will be lost. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Rabbi Robin Podolsky. I'm with CLU, Clergy and L.A.D. United for Economic Justice. And we are here to support the tourism workers in their fight for an Olympic wage. We learned in Deuteronomy 24:14, "You must not oppress a needy wage worker, be they kin or a stranger, an immigrant, in your land." Business owners can say, well, they are in business to make money. Why should they sacrifice their interests? Well, we can ask, why is it in our interest as a polity to have businesses in our city? Because we have a commitment to make billionaires richer? Or because we support businesses that uplift our entire community? An economy is a web of relationships, just as a city, a polity, is a community of mutual obligation. Now, we have the report that indicates-- is that the bell?
You're on general public comment now. So we break, you're on general public comment now.
General public comment, thank you. We have the report to indicate that the tourism wage will not negatively impact the economy of Los Angeles. And we know that the Olympics will be a goldmine for local businesses. They will not suffer, they will thrive. It is only just that those workers whose labor makes it possible for businesses to thrive should get their fair share of the prosperity they produce, should be able to live where they work, should be able to get their kids what they need to go to school, should be able to have healthcare, and breathe a little bit, to live in dignity and security. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Seidman, a resident for almost 12 years of Council District 13 and the Chair of the Echo Park Neighborhood Council. Earlier this year, we passed a community impact statement in support of raising the wage for tourism workers joining 16 other neighborhood councils. The Echo Park Neighborhood Council is in full support of the Tourism Workers Rising Motion and see this as a matter of economic justice, housing justice, and public safety. These workers have been taking days off of work, sacrificing time with their families, and skipping sleep to come speak to you about the need for this policy. Tourism workers are disproportionately rent burdened. As city leaders, you have the responsibility to ensure working families don't end up on the street. I want to thank the leadership of Councilmember Soto Martinez and ask that the rest of the council vote yes in support of an Olympic wage. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Berlin. I'm one of the co-chairs of the California Poor People's Campaign. We have 4,000 members in the City of Los Angeles across all city council districts. One of the core tenets of the Poor People's Campaign is that every person has the right to a living wage, to have decent housing and healthcare. Sadly, workers here today have told me that their wages aren't high enough to guarantee that. Working at their current wages, they would have to work more than 96 hours a week simply to afford a modest two-bedroom apartment. That's not right, it's not just, it's not moral. In our campaign, we say, somebody's been hurting our people, and we won't be silent about it anymore. The Olympics will put our city in a global spotlight. We have an opportunity to show the rest of the world what we value. That's why we urge you to vote for this living wage so that all of our workers, who are our neighbors and our families, and we love them, so that they can have decent and dignified lives. When we lift from the bottom, everybody rises. Los Angeles, we can do better. Si se puede.
I'm a member of the WGA and the DGA and SAG union. I have listened to a lot of businesspeople come up and say they are not saying no to $30 an hour. You know, the best way to not say no to $30 an hour is to not say no to $30 an hour. Yes is the word that you're looking for. There's been references to the thoughtful increases of the past. They fought all of those too. So what are we talking about? Now the Olympics are coming, and somehow, they can't make it work when the biggest tourism event of the century is going to be in Los Angeles. People are going to make a lot of money during the Olympics. Why shouldn't the businesses that make that money not share that with the workers? That's all these people are asking for. This is already a gradual approach. This is already leading up to a big event that's going to cause a lot of money to come in, and it's already extremely reasonable and overdue. The, I keep going, right? These are workers who are already working double shifts. They can't afford to live in the city they work in. Some of them are sleeping in their cars just to avoid, to make enough money to drive to the house that they had to buy that's four hours away. I know this because I read it in the Los Angeles Times, which is owned by a billionaire, and he still printed it. I think that paying these people fairly is somehow going to cause the entire world not to come to the Olympics is simply not credible. You have to ask, why does the business model depend on paying people unfairly, even during this gigantic tourism event that is coming? Please, please, end the madness. Give these workers what they need and vote for the Olympic wage. Thank you.
Hi, I'm here for 66 in public comment. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Fatima Murrieta. I live in CD4, and I'm Senior Organizer at the Writers Guild of America West. I'm here today representing our 12,000 TV and screenwriters, many of whom work in the hospitality industry to stay afloat during downtimes, a reality of how expensive it is to live in this city. In 2014, I stood right here as a hotel worker delivering the same message. Workers deserve dignity and a living wage. Bosses used the exact same talking points you're hearing today, but workers won. And that victory was truly transformative, not just for me, but for thousands of workers who finally gained the stability to build a better future. And the hotel industry thrived as a result. Today, I'm asking you to stand with us again because everything in price has gone up, except wages. The tourism ordinance is about making sure hard-working people who make LA a world-class destination can afford to live and work here. Vote yes. Let's make history and transform lives once again. Thank you.
Good afternoon, general public comment in item 66.
Yep, two minutes.
Good afternoon, Council President Harris-Dawson and members of the council. My name is Rob Notoff. I'm with the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, where we proudly represent over 800,000 workers across LA County, including these brave workers at Unite Here Local 11 and SEIU USWW, and especially those who fasted for the past three days in support to bring attention to this important piece of legislation. And I'm here today to make it clear that enough is enough. Let's move forward with an Olympic wage for our tourism workers. The time to act is not tomorrow. The time to act is today. And the eyes of the labor movement are upon each and every one of you. And we want to know, will you support dignified wages for these brave workers behind me? Or will you maintain the status quo of poverty wages in this industry? As a side note, did you all know that poverty is the fourth-leading cause of death in the United States? These workers literally cannot afford to maintain the status quo of poverty wages. So let's make sure that our tourism workers can afford the city in which they work. Let's make sure our tourism workers can access affordable family healthcare. And let's make sure that we restore the dignity to the lives of those who make our hospitality industry thrive. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members, president, council members. I'm speaking on 66 and a general comment. Yes, we can. I am Narash Bhakta, Regional Director of Minority Immigrant Business Owners, representing over 650 small and mid-sized hotels. Olympic is in 2028, and only for two weeks. All CEO-making millions are not us. We are minority immigrant, small-business hotel owners. We are not those who are making millions. Please don't compare apple with oranges. I stand here today to express my deep concern about the proposed minimum wage increase and significant impact on a small and a mid-sized hotels, particularly those with 150 rooms and below. Hotels operate within a very limited, very limited income framework. And this increase will create a domino effect that reaches beyond and just hospital industry. Tourism already facing challenges, and this change will only make it harder to sustain. The repercussion will only affect the hotel owners, also employees, vendors, and ultimately, the broader community. The decision-risk-taking scenario where both employees and employments will suffer. Businesses will force to close the doors, and including potential layoffs, reducing services, and hurt overall. Please do not force us to pass this to increase the labor cost to the customers who are fellow Los Angelins. Please vote yes to carve out 150 rooms and below and limited-service hotels. Otherwise, this will make life harder. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rick Tuttle. I am here on behalf of the Clergy L.A. United for Economic Justice, CLU. I'm a volunteer member. As some of you may know, I used to spend a lot of time in this building. I was Los Angeles City Controller from 1985 to 2001. I assure you, there are ghosts in this building. I also must say, it's great to see old friends, and so many of us have done so much together over the years. It is great to see each of you. Why am I here today? And why am I standing here instead of online? Because our friends in security realized there's something wrong. I've come off two hip surgeries, as in hip surgeries. I'm getting better, don't worry. I'll be on the basketball court by April or May. But I appreciate not just standing online so long. Why am I here? Because of the importance of this issue. And here's, what do I have, 16 seconds? That's all I need. This is an historic vote. If you were in Congress in 1935, where were you on the Wagner Act? If you were in Congress in 1935, where were you on the Wagner Act? If you were in Congress in '64, '5, where were you on the Civil Rights Act? On this city council in 1997, where were you on the Living Wage Act? It's that time, it's this time. Last point, let's not slow-walk this, folks. I understand all this. Don't slow-walk it. Vote today. It's in your hands. Vote today. Don't let this get slow-walked. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for taking care of me.
Good morning, council members. I'm here to represent the hundreds of hotels in the city of L.A. that are immigrant-owned mom-and-pop businesses that are barely surviving. These are small, family-run operations, not big corporate chains with endless resources. Since COVID, tourism has disappeared from our hotels. We now primarily serve locals and support Mayor Bass's Inside Safe program, offering affordable, budget-friendly rates. The proposed wage ordinance of $30 an hour plus $8.25 an hour will devastate us. We can't just raise our costs and figure that guests will just pay it. No, they will leave us to go to Marriott, to Hilton. They have so many more amenities like spas, gyms, bars, restaurants. We can't compete with that. We're limited-service hotels. This ordinance was clearly designed for large, corporate hotels near LAX, not small hotels like ours. After reviewing the BEAR study, I found it was based on a series of huge assumptions. These didn't take into consideration the realities faced by small-business hoteliers or the actual operating expenses we incur. Everything in that study was theoretical, disconnected from the real world, and yet the city spent $180K on taxpayers' money on this bogus and inaccurate study. Why? This money could have been spent elsewhere. Even Unite Here's president pointed out that big hotels, CEOs make millions, but us, small hoteliers, aren't even making minimum wage when you factor into stress, risk, and hard work we put into running our businesses. We built these businesses with hard work, and we cannot afford this drastic wage increase. I urge you to carve out hotels with 150 rooms or fewer from this ordinance. If you do the math, as I have done with many of the council members who actually agreed to meet with us, you'll see it's impossible for us to survive. Please carve us out. Thank you.
Speaker, your time has expired.
I echo what these folks are saying. It's gotten expensive in Los Angeles. Housing's expensive, food cost has risen, but that's not the responsibility of the business community. It is your job. We, your constituents, put you in these seats to govern for us, and all we see is legislation after legislation where you're increasing the cost to do business in Los Angeles, and then you force us to pass these costs on to the consumers. They're the ones that suffer. Now, these limited-service hotels, 150 guest rooms and below, there's an amendment in front of you to carve us out of this motion to make us pay $38 an hour. Now, the reason for that is these limited-service hotels, they're not tourist hotels per se. They cater to Los Angelinos, your unhoused program, folks that are transitioning from apartments, they need to stay in hotels. People that have bad credit stay in our hotels, the limited-service hotels, because they're affordable, and they'll never qualify for renting an apartment because of bad credit. Then you have people that have events in Los Angeles, they rent the rooms from us for their families to come to Los Angeles, and these are small families. These aren't gazillionaires that can afford $1,000 a night room. And then you have people that simply cannot afford vacationing in Paris, like many of you had witnessed during the Olympics to go see the aftermath of that. Someone will talk about that. But that's a good example where they use these local hotels as staycation. So what we're asking you is to consider a pause, study these amendments. Many of our people in the business community have already spoken before, you know the facts now, and my community of small-business owners, limited-service hotel owners have been coming here for 24 months now to talk to you about our industry. So you cannot deny one thing, that we haven't done our job to educate you as your constituents. So this time, let's work together to bring down the cost of living in Los Angeles. Do not pass it on to the consumers or Los Angelinos.
Good morning, council. Let me just start by saying someone had mentioned that CEOs making $40, $50 million or something. I would love to make that money and definitely consider this motion and say, "Go for it, let's do it." But we are minority-owned, small businesses over here, and let me just debunk some myths for you. If you guys remember the '84 Olympics over here, the hotels and the economy, the tourism economy did not do as well in other years as they did in '84. Okay, '84 was a bad year. Check Disneyland's number, and you will know the mathematics behind that. I also, people talk about increasing the wage to $30, but they're not counting the healthcare cost. The right math on that is $79,000 per year cost. Someone studying 17 years in a college, getting an accounting degree, barely at a bank, makes $60,000 or something around that, and you want us to pay $79,000 of cost for front-desk employees? That's great. We definitely, I mean, I'm just surprised how you come to that conclusion. And lastly, talking about, I see most of the people over here, you're having the Starbucks coffee. So go to McDonald's, and where we buy the 99 cents coffee over there, and see how much in line we have to wait to order on kiosk, how many people are working over there. Do not force us to hire and hurt our community members. We stand with them. We stand with them, and we do not want to take their jobs away. We want to have a fair discussion about that. Carve out 150 rooms or less limited-service hotels from this ordinance. Thank you so much. Thank you again.
General Public Comment. I'm really surprised. I'm here to support a hotel worker $30 minimum wage. Why do I support that? So that means 50% of the hotel worker will get fired. That means all of the hotel, restaurant, or hotel owner will move to other states. That means all of the hotel workers will lose their employment, will lose their health benefit. So if we are trying to, if our city of Los Angeles, we are having a $500 million deficit, however, we are giving some sort of 55% increase for a hotel worker, they cannot even get $3 minimum wage in their home country, and somehow they come to the United States illegally, somehow asking for $30 minimum wage. They have been denied by their own home country, and somehow they can come to Los Angeles, demand a $30 minimum wage. Last year, Los Angeles Police Department got a 10% increase, and everybody called them the racist. So right now, they are getting 55% increase. Everybody are okay. So I don't understand if anyone right here are capable of doing math. Do you have an increased 55% revenue in order to accommodate a 55% increase in salary? So if you fail to do your math, then good luck for you. Hopefully, all of the hotel worker move to other states. That means the city of Los Angeles will no longer collect taxes. So let the woke give them 55%. Everybody else, we're gonna do our own way.
Hi, my name is Tyler Reed, and I'm 14 years old. And this is my mom, Javon Houston. And I come here to speak today because I want to say, it's hard to see my mom come every day home crying and coughing because she has to go to work at airport and breathe in jail feel. And I also have to go through the same thing because of the community I live in, with the jail feel and the airplanes dumping over in my community. And I come here today to speak for y'all to vote on 66, right? For y'all to vote on 66, yes. And that's it.
Good morning, council. My name is Deborah Lewis. I worked at LAX for the last 40 years for HMS Host. I'm also a constituent for Ms. Park in Local CD11. I'd like to say, as our constituents there, we're proud of the work that Ms. Park has done for our community. We believe that you have the integrity and the wisdom to see how important it is that the constituents can earn a good wage to be able to live near where we work. I am fortunate enough to be able to live where I live, because I live in a rent-control area, but my husband and I, even with the rent control, find it very difficult to be able to pay those high rent. It's, we're beginning to struggle a lot, even though we do have rent control. Where my constituent, my other coworkers, you know, they're struggling with their families to be able to live in the area close to where they work. So we're asking that you use some of your expertise in being able to pass this legislation to help our coworkers to be able to live and support their families near where they work. Thank you very much.
My name is Jasmine Atkins, and I have worked at LAX for 15 years. I am now currently a supervisor in Hudson in Terminal 1, and I am here to speak to support the Olympic Wage, because I know that this will help that the policy make ensure that the wage floor is lifted and ensure that no family or a worker will left behind. My coworker and I recently won the union contract, and I am now making $27 an hour. No workers at LAX should be treated like second-class citizen. We all deserve to make enough money to provide for our families, and it's time to unite, not divide. When you vote for this policy, vote yes.
What's being said at the city council today, it's a double-edged sword. It all depends on what side of it you're on. But did you notice, everyone representing the hotels all had nice suits on? All the workers, they didn't have suits on, not even the union representatives. Why? Because they're united, and the owners are not amongst the people that care for the people that are workers. They are controlling the numbers, and at the end, like one gentleman said, he's gonna lay them up. If that's what he needs to do to close his business, that's his will. But these people deserve that living wage. If you can afford to give it to them because you're increasing everyone else's. Marquise and DeLeon.
General Public Comment.
They gave raises to Kevin DeLeon's stop, didn't he? I'm glad the controller's office caught it, Ethics Commission, and I'm glad they're paying attention to this stuff. If you can vote to give your own people raises, these workers that do the actual work deserve that rate too. And not one of them makes $250,000 a year. So if you're gonna vote, don't vote like lobbyists that they came in and gave you votes and support. Vote for the people you're supposed to represent, the people of L.A. And those are people that don't agree with me, I understand. Shout out to the smoking scan and the people out there. You guys understand that I speak from my heart and for the people. God bless you, guys. Merry Christmas.
Okay, first I'll say good riddance to racist Kevin Louis Vuitton Leon. The L.A. sleazy council is the most corrupt local government in the United States, where indicted criminal Kern Price and sleazy Dawson vote daily. The black community has zero representation from these black criminals. Black faces occupy 20% of the city council and county, yet black people are nearly 50% of the homeless, the incarcerated, and the unemployed. Why is that? Sleazy Markleazy Dawson is running a food desert. This corrupt, burnt man is currently behind a scheme again to sell the black community's state EDD unemployment office. Have a good afternoon, everybody.
Hi, this is Ruth Ruthless. I'd like to speak on the nuisance items and general public comment.
You'll have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment.
Okay, thank you. So the city is trying to take these properties from people, these are like houses and stuff, I think, with maybe additions that aren't, like, the people of Los Angeles don't have an extra $1,000. These liens are small, and there are laws now that you can't do an unlawful detainer on someone if they owe less than like a month's rent, and some of these seem like a workaround where the city is trying to deprive people of their property over small amounts of money rather than just helping them. This would make people homeless. This could displace people. The city demolished a hotel, the 108 Hotel on Broadway and 107th, in October. It was a 21-unit hotel, I believe. I believe it was structurally sound, and there's an assembly bill, a new law went into effect on January 1st of this year that prohibits that. It prohibits.
Speaker, your time is up.
Or enforcement of abatement action.
Sorry, Speaker, your time is up.
Against hotels because of, okay, thank you. Free policy?
Thank you. I have a right to speak on these things. To the brave workers who are there today, I'm amazed by your words, but you have to realize that if it's going to cost jobs, it's going to cost jobs, but you deserve a better wage. It is so difficult to live in this city, and for those of us who can, cannot stand by and watch those of you who make this city run, who do everything to keep this city running, cannot live in this city. So I hope that this council will do the right thing. As a former businessman, a small-business owner, I know it's tough. It's hard to make numbers work, but you have to also think about those that you employ and make sure that they can also live in this great city. Public comment, please.
You have one minute?
Public comment?
Yes, you have one minute.
I have a right to speak. I have a right to speak. Yesterday, I stood there before the city council, hands up, I used four different names, and yet Mr. Dawson didn't call upon me. He's playing his little games. My question is, to those of you, members of the city council who are decent, good, and kind, how is it that you continue to allow and participate in that? It's like seeing a crime taking place, and you watch, and you sit there, and you think, you say, "Oh, well, it's not me." But you folks do that. You stand by a simple, stupid little thing like public comment. What worse can I say that could destroy or take away Mr. Dawson's power? But yet you let evil continue the same way you guys did with Martinez. And yet, yesterday, I was assaulted by a non, someone who worked for a nonprofit. Why would he do that? Was he related to you, Mr. Dawson? Was he somebody you knew, Mr. Dawson?
Caller, your time is up.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes, which items would you like to speak to?
Can you tell me what items are available for comment? I know there are a lot of changes, and also general public comment.
Items 2, 4, 6 through 11, and 66 through 82. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
All right, so there's a lot of weirdness going on when you see, I have to, you know, I have to say it's about the LAPD because that is the item, but anytime you see an organization that is receiving gifts from a group that's made up of former members of the organization, or even current members of the organization, you gotta wonder what's going on here, especially when it's in small amounts like this. Now, this isn't a small amount of money to me. Thousands of dollars is a lot of money to me, but, you know, to the city, it's nothing. So these kind of things kind of fly under the radar, and you gotta ask yourself, like, who's paying who off? Who's doing who a favor? Who's paying for whose kid's teeth to get fixed? You know, who's putting whose kid through school? Because that's what's going on here, when you have thousands of dollars going from, you know, the Friends of the LAPD to the LAPD. That's sketch. What's going on when the LAPD has no shortage of funds, and it has no problem getting more money whenever it needs it? So why is this happening?
Caller, please move on to another item.
Okay, World AIDS Day, man, this is gonna be unpopular, but I think everybody knows about AIDS already, and I think the victims of AIDS would rather you do something to provide healthcare for the people than, I don't know, light up the fucking building, when most people can't even go see it. You know, if you live near, if you live near City Hall, you know, sometimes it's dangerous at night to be going to go look, just go look at some stupid fucking lights that for some reason now costs $38 more every time than it did like a year ago, and we never got an explanation for that. Bob Blumberg, Chair of the Budget Committee, he didn't know why it even cost $400 to begin with. He just knew it used to cost some more. Well, why does it cost more again now? What's going on? We don't have no answer for that. There's a bunch of liens right here. The city wouldn't have to go scraping money from all the homeowners if they didn't have to pay all these settlements because they can't fix the fucking sidewalks. Nithya Raman's old field deputy said that if it was gonna take, the city said it was gonna take 500 years to fix all the sidewalks. That's crazy, because if you think about it, that's 500 years of six-figure settlements every week. How many untold billions and billions of dollars is that really gonna cost the city? If I'm taking, if we're taking their word for it, if we're really gonna believe everything they say, how many untold zeros is that gonna be over 500 years of people tripping and falling on these stupid sidewalks that I know wouldn't take that long? Those countries aren't even that old. Los Angeles isn't even that old. How's it gonna take longer to fix all the sidewalks than it took to build them? That's ridiculous.
General Public Comment?
General public comment?
Uh, general public comment. It's really despicable how people keep humbling themselves further and further and further, and the city council members to stand up there, and they don't fucking pay attention, and they talk amongst themselves, and they laugh, and they snack, and they disappear. Katie Yaroslavsky didn't even know something had happened because she wasn't paying attention because she said she was in the bathroom. I thought they told us that they have speakers back there, so when you guys aren't in chambers, you know what's going on. Turns out, that was a lie. So, you know, fuck off with all that. Y'all just wanna divide the city up so you further and further so you can collect all the pieces and pat your pockets. The people see through it, you know, you're hearing defend, deny, depose, whatever, you know, you're hearing a lot of that. It's not my motto. I was warning you guys for a long time that the people were getting tired of it, and you're, you know, you're just sticking up the people with all these liens while you fucking shift money to new cops that you're paying to house to harass people.
Caller, your time is expired.